We all set?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I guess we have our forum. We can open the meeting now, so thank you for your patience. It's 6:25 and I guess we can begin. Mr. Tersey, there were a few changes. You wanted to highlight a couple of pieces of information that you handed out.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening I put in front of all the committee members, also the public has copies of this as well, in the school board. The only changes that we had made from our meeting on the 30th was on page two of the budget you have in front of you. In the 1,205,5610 line, the special ed tuition public, we included the notes in there to represent what that total cost is based on, the $349,824. And then also, we broke down the Bright Beginnings program, which comes out of that line as well.
Okay.
So I provided the budget committee and the school board a breakdown of the Bright Beginnings, and we put those, that breakdown, in the notes within the budget, so the public is aware of where that program is located within the budget.
So all these are different sub-account numbers here are located through the budget. These 51,120, they go to 0012 and 13, and all those are throughout the budget.
Those lines that you see there, Mr. Chair, I believe they start with a 510?
Yes.
That represents an SAU line?
Oh, okay.
So as our Bright Beginnings runs through our SAU office, it takes on an SAU line, which is the 510 line. However, that cost of the total Bright Beginnings program is within the Wakefield operating budget under this 1,200 line.
Okay.
And it's where it's always been, and we just broke it out specifically to include the salary, the benefits, and all of the other costs that are associated with Bright Beginnings. Where in the past, that line, the 1,255,610, has just said Bright Beginnings underneath it. So this year, we broke that out specifically because people had questions as to where that program is located within our operating, within the Wakefield operating budget.
Okay. So that's in the SAU budget, those 510, 1,200?
No, sir. Nope, that's not included in the SAU budget. It comes in the SAU as a revenue. It's counted as a revenue through the SAU.
Okay.
So you'll see in the SAU warrant, I think it's 800 and offset our revenues of...
Pardon me, the 820?
820. So 400,000 of that 820 represents the Bright Beginnings program, which is a combo of both Wakefield and Milton.
Okay.
So it's noted as a revenue on the SAU budget. Okay?
Okay.
And then I also provided you updated warrant articles based on the votes that were taken the other night for the budget committee recommendations. I did notice this evening, thanks to Lisa, that the, there's a typo in the first paragraph, first session of annual meeting that should say, "Third day of February 2015."
Okay.
And then also in Article 1, "The Election of Officers," says, "Voting by official ballot, March 10, 2015." Should say 2015.
Okay.
So with those two edits, these are, these are the warrants. Do you have one more, Nate?
Yeah.
And then on page four, the last sentence, "Given under our hands, said Wakefield, New Hampshire, on the day of January 2015." It's their 14th. So other than those edits, what you'll see on these warrants is some of the verbiage at the top of the warrants, but it does include the votes that were taken the other night on the 30th.
Okay.
Good.
That's what you have in front of you this evening. So I would recommend that any question, you know, we work off of the documents that were given out this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So what we have done traditionally is gone through the budget, section by section. It's the way that the budget committee went through it. So we can start with the 1,100 section, which is regular education, and it's all pretty well broken down. It looks like the bottom line for that appropriation is $4,942,959.05. Obviously, we got, like I say, we have salaries, and a lot of those are by contract, so probably difficult to make any adjustments to those. Judy?
What are your enrollment numbers at Spalding per grade?
Do you still have those from when?
Yeah, we should do that one.
I knew we had gotten those. Well, if anybody has them, who has those handy?
Just do the list of all the explanations.
Have changed since the original question. I've got the projected grades of...
Two of these.
Just one of these, isn't it?
It's like the...
I'm sure that we did get those.
In the back of this chair, is it?
Yeah.
The projected?
Do you know what your actual numbers are usually?
This is projected. I don't think it's for this year.
It's a five-year average, too.
I had a room and it starts at K... Oh, you're talking high school?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
This is only...
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry?
I give an approximate number. I'd say we're approximately between 195 and 200 students, Spalding.
Is that projected, 204?
204 was projected, Connie?
Yes.
Is that close enough, Judy, to make a better figure, between like 195 and 200 students?
Well, we'll do that number.
Well, talking about 195, remember going to 204, that's nine students. That's 100,000 dollars closer. I guess if that doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
But won't we do that at deliberative session, get that number that day, the accurate number, like we've always done in the past?
As I recall, what we used to do is get the actual number at the deliberative session and reduce it by five. Are we still doing that? In the past, we used to lose, on average, about five to 10 students a year out of Spalding. So we started budgeting, we take the actual number at the deliberative session and drop it by five students. So are we still continuing to do that?
Well, I'm sure that that's a possibility. I know the enrollment has been dropping off over the last few years, so, you know, it will probably continue to do that. I mean, we can, we can find out what that exact number is, and I'm sure that, you know, that's a possibility to do at the deliberative session.
I mean, I, we had crafted, for the 15 years I was on the budget committee, and we lost, on average, a minimum of three to five students every single year. And that's how come we started dropping that actual number by three to five to budget a realistic number for the taxpayers.
Well, someone on the school board might know what the enrollment is, because I know that the idea of the forms and keeping track of how many students have been reported to be going to Spalding seems to be a... Bonnie?
How we figured that total was we took the grades this year, we subtracted the sub, we subtracted the graduating seniors and added in the eighth graders that are going to Spalding, and that's how we got the 204. We used the actual number. And if, between November and now, if we've lost students, then that hasn't come to us in our packet yet. But that was based on actuals, that 204 was based on actuals.
Mr. Tersey? The two, the question was specifically, what student, how many students are enrolled at Spalding?
Mm-hmm.
This 204 represents all of the high school students that we pay tuition for, meaning we have students that attend Kingswood, and that they were charged the same Spalding?
Oh, I meant the whole.
Oh, okay.
Judy, I have the latest figure, I'm sorry. I'm trying to bring up where it's 177 at Spalding. And then this is the highest school. Last year, I know that we got that number on that day, because I was the one that did it. Got that number on that day and brought it to deliberative session. I don't recall if there was a difference, but I don't...
198.
If I could point off to someone, we have never, in the whole time I was doing it, we never budgeted full population for the whole year, because we always reduced it. So I just ask you to consider that.
Ralph?
Also, consider that's another year out as well. It's not considered budget.
It's always been another year out. That hasn't changed.
That appears.
But today, all I'm saying is today's number may be reduced by 10 to years from now.
Right. Any more questions on the 1,100, regular education line?
Yeah, I have another question.
Yes.
I'm just looking at the numbers that normied made.
Okay.
And you've got 198 now, and you've got 37 in your senior class, and you've got 37 in your eighth grade class. So it looks like it's around 198 right now for next year.
Okay.
With six students.
And we may be able to get a more solid number on that by, by the time the deliberative session comes around.
Kathy always runs that number on the day. Remember?
Yep.
I have a question, Chair.
Yes?
I have a question. Why was the textbook column so drastically reduced, $1,000?
Textbooks. Now, we had a discussion about that, and if I'm not mistaken, was, were there some programs, were there some...
Curriculum.
Curriculum that was added and then, I'm sorry, Mr. Tersey?
That, that was originally reduced for this fiscal year's budget to $1,000, because it was originally at $51,000. That was for the purchase of the Math &amp; Focus book, textbooks. Till in last year's proposed budget process, we reduced it to 1,000, knowing that we wouldn't need the additional funds this year.
Because you've done the math, the social studies, the science, and what's, what am I missing? Oh, LA, language arts. So you're all up to snuff right now? You don't have to add any programs?
Yeah, we're not anticipating purchasing textbook this year.
Okay, that's what I thought, too.
Okay, moving on to 1,200, special education line. And the bottom line on that section is $1,708,665.85. And of course, as Mr. Tersey explained, that, that includes the Bright Beginnings, and then there's quite a few parts that are broken down in the special education and the tuition aspect of it. Judy?
What's an ABA tutor?
Mrs. Kevler can answer that.
Applied Behavior Analysis Tutor. It's a tutor that's specifically trained, excuse me, in what is referred to as Applied Behavior Analysis Therapy. Very structured behavioral program for our kids on this spectrum.
I can ask questions, too, right?
I'm sorry?
I can ask questions.
Yes, of course.
I have a question.
Yes, Priscilla.
Okay, the, I'm looking at teacher's salary and the para's salary in this Bright Beginnings chart, and I'm wondering, are they under a CBA? Are they under the SAU? I mean, that's a high amount for a para. Who determines, are they under our CBA? Do you have some kind of agreement at the SAU? Could you explain the whole thing to me?
I'm not familiar with the history as to when they were hired and how they were, their original salary was scheduled. So I would anticipate that their original salary was based on the, at the time, what the teacher's salary schedule was or the para's salary schedule was at the time. And then they've been, they've been receiving the increase based on the SAU percentages for support staff or teacher salaries.
So they're not covered under any collective bargaining agreement?
They're, that's a good question, quite honestly, because they're not, they're basically, as an SAU employee, they're not affiliated with the teachers' collective bargaining agreement or the para-professionals. However, they do work as teachers and support staff within Wakefield, so I would assume that if something was to arise, that CBA might come into play. But that has not been clarified at this point, which gives us another reason as to why we need to bring Bright Beginnings into Wakefield and not operate it through the SAU.
Where is Bright Beginnings right now? Is it, I don't think it's in an enterprise fund any longer, right?
Mm-hmm.
It is in an enterprise fund? Okay, that's where it is now, it's an enterprise fund. Everything flows through that enterprise.
Correct.
I'm just disturbed about this amount of the teachers and para, and who makes the determination?
It's when they're originally hired. That was years ago.
$35,863 for a para.
Connie?
On the speech and the vision in the OT and PT, I thought that was done through the Paul School. Why, why are all these figures in here for that?
Let Mrs. Kevler answer that.
Oh, yes. It's Kevler.
The Bright Beginnings, we have a speech pathologist that's contacted through SLC that spends half her day, her week in Wakefield and half her week in Milton specifically for Bright Beginnings. They don't work in the elementary school. We also have a full-time speech assistant who works half-time in Milton and half-time in Wakefield specifically for the preschool program.
And why is that? Why can't it be done through the Paul School's speech and...
The way the program was developed was a language-based program that languages integrated throughout the complete day. So they have some form of speech personnel onboard every day to incorporate the language and communication skills throughout the day for students.
So could some of those be from the Paul School? Or they're just the speech that's hired for that reason?
They're, they're solely hired for Bright Beginnings.
And I just have another question. Last time you had said that you had added some children to the program, and this was probably a month ago. And when we were first talking about this, you said after November 1st, any typicals that were added were going to be paying tuition. Is that the case or not?
Not at this time.
Not at this time, no. So when did you make that determination that they would go for free? Well, not for free, taxpayers of Hamburg.
Again, that's something we'd have to look back in historical books regarding that.
Maybe this year. When was that decision made for not to go with the November? That policy hasn't been brought to the board, it's been tabled.
No, I believe, I'm sorry. Yes, Chair? I believe the question, Connie, was, when was a decision made that students would attend for free?
Mm-hmm.
That, that I don't have an answer to, because that happened in the past. As for potentially charging tuition, that's being vetted through the board currently. That policy's been tabled. We're still having that discussion. Any changes that would potentially occur would not occur until the following school year, so for September of 2015. So it's still being vetted through the board.
So then you can take 10 more typicals if you want, right? And the taxpayers have to put the bill?
Potentially.
So why isn't the school board acting on that policy? Getting that. I would think that's very important, and that should be acted on.
Mrs. Twomley, it's very, very important, and we had a policy meeting where Mrs. Joy was unable to, and other board members didn't feel, see it fit to go on with someone else sitting in her place, so we had to relinquish that session, and it will come up to the next policy meeting.
It went to?
Two weeks from tonight, two weeks from tomorrow.
A little late for this budget, right?
Yes, ma'am, may I apologize?
Priscilla?
So you're saying that speech and OTPT, half-time here, half-time in Milton? So you're paying $84,000 for speech and $46,000 for OTPT? I'm in the wrong occupation.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-four. The projected.
Any more questions on special ed, section 1,400? Oh, okay. Co-curriculum. Now we're on the 1,400 section.
So this is the one I was sharing right here?
Plenty, I'm sorry, Connie.
Are we supposed to vote on each section?
Well, we had...
Where there's been a change, or...
Well, we had already cast our votes on them, and we were just taking public input on them now at this, at this meeting, so...
But we will get a chance to vote on each section, because there've been changes?
We didn't... Mr. Chair?
Yes?
There hasn't been any changes since the original vote that the committee has taken.
So you've just added?
I just added notes.
Added notes.
Yep. There isn't any changes to the numbers themselves.
I think the only change we made was a trailer and made a trailer change, and I think we took out some other money last week.
Yeah.
Oh, but there was a net zero wash, wasn't it?
$2,005, I think it changed it.
No, but I think you did $495 on one line and $2,005 on another, but removed it $2,500 from somewhere else?
Mm-hmm. Well, you added $2,500 and we took out $495.
No, we didn't remove anything else. We just added and subtracted those two.
We added a trailer and took out a miscellaneous line, I think.
Some net change.
Net zero.
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Jerry?
I'm sorry?
But the board reserves the right to make any changes that they see fit after the public hearing, correct?
Yes, you can change. That's right, at the public hearing, there can be changes made, yes. 1,400, the co-curriculum line, looks like $63,179.91. If there's any questions on this part, looks like the sports after-school programs, this is something, the sports program that's been, they've been gearing up this, this year. Kind of a new program.
How come we repeat on the supplies?
Excuse me?
How come we repeat on the supplies? I thought those were all bought last year, or they were in last year's budget to buy.
Let me see, the supplies.
Because they underestimated, that's what we got for an answer, they underestimated what they'd need. If you add all the athletic program together, it's $27,000. 16 kids participated in soccer.
Is that the only program that was run? There was no baseball or football?
Not until spring.
Well, it hasn't started yet, right?
Right, yes.
It hasn't started yet.
Any more questions on co-curriculum? Seeing, seeing any? 2110, crew and officer, that's pretty basic. 2120, guidance and social worker, that line looks like $164,888.96.
Are you changing the assessment test, too?
The, Mr. Tersey, yes?
You feel like you can speak to that?
Yes.
Chair, you'll see a substantial decrease there, because in this year's budget, we budgeted for three years worth of testing, and we actually can only budget for one year of testing at a time. So we made that adjustment, and you'll see that adjustment variance on a $14,912. So we have to...
So a third of that, two-thirds of that money should be left over at the end of this year.
Correct.
Any more questions on 2120? Seeing any? Moving on to 2130, nurse, that line is at $58,408.13. 2150, speech, speech line is $31,496.86. Questions on the speech line? Professional development, 2110, 2210, that line is at $50,000. Not seeing any questions. Library, 2220.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, yes?
Are they finding it difficult to find professional development workshops that aren't related to Common Core, where we didn't go with the Common Core?
I'm not sure about that. Mr. Tersey, would you be able to fill us in on that, on finding workshops, professional development?
That aren't Common Core? Most of the, most of the venues that offer professional development opportunities offer a myriad of opportunities on one or two days, and staff are opting for some of those other opportunities outside of Common Core. However, it is, it's becoming more difficult to find opportunities that don't incorporate Common Core, so...
Are you doing any in-house professional development, or are they always sent out?
Majority of the in-house professional development that we've been having has been for, for Math &amp; Focus this current year.
Which is Common Core, correct?
We're vert to Mr. Gregoire, too, if he has.
Which is Common, a Common Core program.
That's correct. It's based on Common Core. However, I believe the professional development's more focused on the instructional strategies compared to the standards themselves.
In a very short paragraph, can you just explain the difference between Common Core and what it is we do now? Short paragraph.
How short, Bruce? Do some dates.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, yes.
Are they finding it difficult to find professional development workshops that aren't related to Common Core, where we didn't go with the Common Core?
I'm not sure about that. Mr. Tracy, would you be able to fill us in on that? On finding workshops, professional development?
That aren't Common Core?
Most of the, most of the venues that offer professional development opportunities offer a myriad of opportunities on one or two days, and staff are opting for some of those other opportunities outside of Common Core. However, it is, it's becoming more difficult to find opportunities that don't incorporate Common Core, so...
Are you doing any in-house professional development, or are they always sent out?
Majority of the in-house professional development that we've been having has been for, for Math and Focus this current year. We're vert to Mr. Gregoire, too, if he has.
Which is a Common Core program.
That's correct. It's based on Common Core. However, I believe the professional development's more focused on the instructional strategies compared to the standards themselves.
In a very short paragraph, can you just explain the difference between Common Core and what it is we do now? Short paragraph.
How short, Bruce? Do some dates, some meetings. The, really basically what you're looking at is, is Common Core is a standard that's been developed, or have been standards that are developed through a national consortium. What we're currently doing is we're utilizing the Massachusetts standards prob... Massachusetts standards prior to Massachusetts adopting Common Core. So we're utilizing a state standard compared to a national standard at this point.
I don't want to get into too much here, but what were the practical differences?
That was short.
What are the practical differences? What would a child learn under Common Core that he would not learn under a state standard?
Well, it's, they're standards, so you're, I can't really give you what the substantial difference is between Common Core and our current usage of Massachusetts standards. All standards incorporate the skills and the content knowledge necessary that, that people feel are necessary, students need in order to be successful, going from grade level to grade level. There could, there could be conversation, lengthy conversations around the differences between standards from one state to another, between Common Core and other state standards. So it, it becomes a local preference as to what you use for standards. However, they're all designed for success of children.
We'll leave it there, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions on professional development? Library, twenty-two-twenty. The line looks like it's at ninety-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
What is, under library equipment, we went from eighteen dollars to one thousand. Can you explain that variation?
iPads?
Yes.
Who's the iPads? Twenty-five iPads?
Yes, one-time purchase.
One-time purchase, iPads for the, for the library.
Any more questions on the library? Seeing none. School board, twenty-three-ten. This line's at eighty thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. Budget committee did reduce the miscellaneous line by four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I feel like that was the school board, Jerry.
Well, we did at a budget committee meeting, so we're gonna...
We reduced it by five hundred, and then they took another four ninety of it.
Was it? Can I just have it my way? Well, okay, that's fine, we all did it together.
Oh, that's what I like.
There you go.
That's what I like.
Teamwork.
Any more, any more comments on the school board line? Seeing none. Move on to the principals line. Twenty-four-ten. That line is at three hundred and thirty-four dollars, thirty-three hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and eight cents. I'm sorry.
Judy has one.
Oh, Judy, I'm sorry.
My understanding is that there'll be some office employees. Do you start your office employees out at the same rate as yours, what was your existing ones? Or do you start on a scale, where they start at the bottom?
Mr. Tracy, you could...
Depends on who we hire, based on experience, and based on the job responsibility. Administrative assistant tends to make more than the front office secretary.
So is that your intent, to hire an administrative assistant?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And that would be under principal support salary?
Correct.
Would you then also have a full-time secretary also?
Yes.
Or just part-time?
Currently, we would hire at the same hourly rate, which is not full-time.
So you're gonna have an administrative assistant and a part-time secretary?
Correct, what we currently have in the office.
Ralph?
When would that discussion take place, at the school board level? I'm surprised you haven't, we're doing something different in the office.
We'll be having that discussion tomorrow evening at the meeting. I'm answering Judy's question.
Aren't you glad you came tonight?
I am, I'm sure.
However, may I, Mr. Chair, may I? The board's aware that we'll be hiring, that we'll need to hire an assistant, so...
We are.
I'd say, I'd say part of the board is, the other part looks like they might have just...
All the other side of the table.
The other...
I didn't hear anything about an administrative assistant.
Any more questions on the principals line? Just never know what you're gonna learn when you come to a budget meeting, huh?
Drive it outside of a meeting.
It's not fair, Mr. Chair.
Operations and maintenance, are there any more questions on the principal line? Operations and maintenance, twenty-six-ten. And this, this line looks like four hundred and forty-five thousand, forty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Can we go back to the principal's line?
Sure.
The health insurance, at forty-eight thousand, is that two or three employees included in that line?
Is that on our health insurance breakdown that we got?
No, you don't get what they have for insurance.
Oh, okay.
That's new family plan, is that right?
We... Mr. Tracy?
We don't, we don't provide the specific plans, because that would identify what benefits people are receiving.
I'm not asking the plans, I'm asking how many employees are covered under that forty-eight thousand?
That's two, the principal health insurance covers, covers the principal and the assistant principal.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, operations and maintenance, that line is at four hundred and forty-five thousand, forty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents.
And that's changed.
I'm sorry?
That's changed.
Oh, that was for the twenty-five hundred dollars we had for the trailer?
Correct.
Okay. That was the utility trailer, right, Bob?
Yes.
Any questions on operations and maintenance? Seeing none.
I, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
No, that's right, there's a lot of information that I was trying to digest.
How many custodians do we have now?
Oh, we have two and a half part people on second shift. And then you have one full-time and part-time on first.
So there is a full and a part time now during the...
Right.
Every year they add five percent to the water and five percent to the sewer, and it never goes up.
It's going up this year.
It is gonna go up, Bonnie?
Yeah.
Okay. What are we doing to the ball field for twelve thousand, five hundred dollars?
It's the furthest-most fields of the regulation size field.
So then you give them to the... The infield?
Yeah, the infield.
Plus, there's more money than that, because there's money from, for this year, that hasn't been spent yet. I think it's six, but I'm not sure, I'm looking.
Is that in the co-curriculum, hard for these sports, yeah?
I have a piece of paper here that they've handed us out. I have too many pieces of paper. I have too many pieces of paper.
Because I was looking in the supplies, yeah, ventures line. None of them.
Last year, four...
They have to be enlarged, yeah. And then impacts the sprinkler system, but, yeah, all heads. What was it?
What's not on the sheet? I think it was six thousand, but maybe Jerry remembers. What's in the budget for this year for the, for the field? Is it six?
No, I don't recall that, so...
I thought there was more de-rocking to be done.
I believe it was six thousand dollars set aside for the de-rocking of the fields.
That's what I thought.
Some of it was done this summer, but I don't think it's completed due to the fact that they didn't want to have to redo it again for the chain duty infield.
Yeah, I thought it was six thousand. Some of it's still left, plus the twelve thousand I had asking for.
What about the increase on snow removal?
New contract? No, he stayed the same.
Oh, snow, right?
Mm-hmm.
No, stayed the same. Because this was done before the contract, right? And then they approved the contract, and I believe he stayed the same except for the snowstorms where he does the whole roof.
Yeah, the, the increase was based on anticipated snow removal from the roof, which we've seen a increase from year to year. Because that's an additional cost, based on...
But that was in, ninety-six hundred from last year.
That was actual, because...
He did it, what, twice last year, Bob?
Ah, I think it was twice.
But it was, from what you explained, it was a bigger project than what he had anticipated. So if he had to do that element of it, it would cost more.
No, right.
But it is still being separated out.
Still be separated.
The swimming pool from the rest of the building.
That's the, that's the name you were looking for.
Yeah, we missed that last time.
Yes, you weren't here, but I still thought you were.
Still used your, yeah. Well, I mean, because I think that got damaged one time when it was, when it was done, when the snow was removed kind of recklessly, and it was expensive to get that fixed, so... Denny?
I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm really pleased that school board is paying attention to this building and, and maintaining it, let the air, because it's nice to see that kind of attention to detail come in and taking care of this building.
Thank you.
Any more questions on operations and maintenance? Seeing none. That line looks like five hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Any questions on transportation?
There is a new line under transportation, the third line down, athletic transportation drivers. ATH, we weren't quite sure what ATH was, but that's athletic. In case anybody wondered.
Is that included in the twenty-seven thousand that you added?
Yes, I went through the whole budget and we culled out the numbers to twenty-seven.
I wonder where the gas and diesel numbers developed? I mean, the gas has gone down tremendous amount here in just the last few weeks, is it? Are those still realistic numbers? Can we...
Projected numbers, I'll... Mr. Eldridge, can you answer those? We get those figures from him.
Yeah, those numbers were looked at back this, this fall. The state does give a reduced rate, which is lower than what, what everybody had been paying when it was up closer to the four-dollar range. I know that the rate has gone down some, but the, the state is similar to us. It's not locked into anything, so that is a variable rate that will be going up and down. So if things turn around and start to climb up, then there's the potential of, of us paying more. But those numbers were looked at in the fall, so there hasn't been any adjustment since rates have gone down.
Hard to know, I guess, but everything I've read recently says they're gonna stay down at least for a while.
Bruce, you know, this is difficult for anybody, but I know they're gonna stay down, but this budget's up eighteen months in advance.
Right, yeah, I understand that.
You know, they're gonna be down eighteen months from now?
Yeah. Either they're down twelve months from now, or you're still ahead.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, we're, we know for sure pretty much the number of gallons that we use each year. That's been pretty consistent.
Right.
So it's just a matter of what the figure is that we use to calculate it out. And like he said, it's, you know, kind of throwing the dot at what number we actually choose to, to go with.
Do you find much fuel savings now that you have those buses parked, the highway garage down there?
There is a saving.
Does it save a pretty, pretty good amount of...
I couldn't tell you right off, you know, how great it is, but there is a saving.
Noticeable, eh?
The last number we had was seven hundred a month, in fuel.
Any more questions on the transportation line for Mr. Eldridge?
Thank you.
Seeing none. Twenty-eight-twenty, technology. Technology line is at fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. It's down pretty, pretty significantly, and I think part of that probably has to do... Did we get rid of, we finished up that lease on the computers? That was a three-year lease that we... Any questions on the technology line? Seeing none. Twenty-nine-hundred, workers' compensation unemployment, sixty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Something that we... Not what you do with that line. Food services. On the back page, we have the food services line at one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. And food service has been done by Cafe Services, is this the third year, or third or fourth year that...
Second.
Second year? Any questions on food services line? Seeing no questions on that. That brings the grand total of the budget up to eight million, eight hundred and nine thousand, thirty-one dollars and seven cents for the physical year 2016. Judy?
Jerry, can you explain to me why the budget total doesn't match the Warren article?
Um...
That's your problem.
I'm sorry. Well, yeah, that was the, that was the... Well, yeah, that was, that was the, uh, the revenue was, was what we were told. And, uh, Mr. Tereshi could probably explain that if you wouldn't mind.
No, you'd like to jump to the warrant articles?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we finish with the budget.
Article four is where you're referring to.
Right, article four, correct, Judy?
Yeah, it doesn't match the budget.
Yeah, what you see in article four, a total of nine million, eighty-two thousand, thirty-two dollars is the proposed operating, what's basically your proposed operating budget, which also includes your revenues in there. And we're following, following the RSA that specifically states that you need to note a gross budget when you're, when you're providing these numbers. So if you go down to the note, the first note under there, you'll see that in highlight what is actually being raised and appropriated by the voters is the eight million, eight hundred, nine thousand, thirty-two dollars. The nine million, eighty-two thousand, thirty-two dollars is offset by two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars of revenues. That, that's our grant monies that come through. So we're noting what our, our anticipated revenues are through grant funding, which is on top of our expected, our anticipated expenditures, which is our operating budget. So you have to include your expenditures and your revenues in a gross budget developing the warrant article to the voters. The RSA doesn't specifically say you have to note it in the warrant. However, this is the advice of DRA, our two district attorneys, as well as the senior consultants with MRI.
DRA says estimated revenues should include any revenues that would be used to offset appropriations. The federal funds don't offset the budget. The federal funds stand on their own. What are they offsetting in the budget?
An example would be offsetting salaries, particularly for Title One, two salary positions in there, as well as, they, these are.
Is enough salary positions for Title One in the budget?
Not currently, not in the, in our proposed operating budget, because they're, they're written into the Title One grants, which come in as a revenue that supplement our, our operating budget. So they're considered a revenue.
Where is the two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars of this budget that you're offsetting?
It's not in that.
I don't understand your question. Correct, so it's on, it's on top, it's considered a revenue that comes in to support our programs.
I understand that, but you're also putting it on the expense side because you're raising and appropriating it.
That's where the note comes into play.
It doesn't matter what the note says. You are raising and appropriating in the warrant article nine million dollars. That's what you're asking the townspeople to appropriate. So where is the two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in this budget that that revenue is offsetting?
It's in those grants. You don't see it specifically in the operating.
What code are you going to put the two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars under in your budget? What function code are you using?
That would be in a, I believe it's a revenue code that you don't see in that operating budget, the proposed operating budget.
No. The revenue has to offset something in the budget. The revenue offsets an appropriation in your budget.
Budget's got to be a gross. You can't net it into that budget.
The federal money, the federal grant money, from my understanding, is in a totally different accounting group under a federal projects fund. It's totally accounted for separately at the S A U. Has a total separate, whole separate accounting system. It doesn't go through the operating budget.
And I'll just continue to say that it comes in as a revenue, which is part of your overall budget.
No, it's not. This budget is, is a, this is an expense budget. You can't take revenue and net down the expense, expense budget. This has to be a gross.
Yes. One sec, Ralph, do you?
Does it take nine million, eighty-two thousand, thirty-two dollars to operate the school for the federal school?
Yes, sir.
Do the taxpayers have to raise nine million dollars for it? No, they don't.
I'm sorry, I get into interruption.
I thought you were done, Ralph, I'm sorry.
If an RSA calls for disclosure of revenues in an article on the warrant, doesn't note one of article four tell you what is offsetting that nine million, eighty-two thousand, thirty-two dollar budget? And the amount that's coming in from the federal grant? And then on the same note, it discloses that you're going to raise through taxation eight million, eight hundred, nine thousand, thirty-two dollars.
It might say that in the note, Ralph, but it says in the warrant article that we're raising nine million, eighty-two.
As an operating.
And that's what counts. As an operating budget.
So the budget has to match the nine oh E two. Because that federal grant does not pass through this budget.
But it's being used as a tool.
That's okay, it does not pass through this budget.
Well, the problem is if you, if you were to warrant article to raise and appropriate, Ralph, you, you run the budget committee long enough to know that when you raise and appropriate, you're raising the money through taxation and you're appropriating it for a certain cause. So you're raising and appropriating the money. Or you're taking it through taxation and you're appropriating it for a, for a purpose. So you're raising and appropriating, and that's what this is saying, is raising and appropriating, uh, nine million, eighty-two thousand dollars. Well, we, we don't have a budget that's nine million, eighty-two thousand dollars. We have a budget that's eight million dollars. So we don't need to raise and appropriate, we don't need to burden the taxpayers with another two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar tax burden. Because what happens is if we ask the, the taxpayers to, if we raise and appropriate this, that additional two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars gets sent to DRA and it gets put on the taxpayers as a burden. And they have to calculate that into the tax rate and charge the, charge the taxpayers that much more money on their tax rate in order to appropriate that two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Well, why would you tax people two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars for money that you're getting in a grant from the federal government anyway? It, it was similar, the guy at the New Hanford Municipal Association said to me, he said, you get highway money for your highway systems and repairs in town, but you don't see the, the town adding that grant money onto your budget in the town. What you're doing is you have your highway budget and you do your highway repairs. You take that money, you add it into your budget to offset the repairs you're doing on the highways. He said it makes no sense to take grant money and, and add it on to your budget and, and make it an expenditure and, and have the tax rate go up on account of it.
So you're saying that the additional money that we gain from the federal as through federal grants shouldn't be considered part of the gross operating budget?
Well, no, because, because the budget is what, the budget is what's being requested right here. This eight million, eight hundred and nine thousand dollars to, to run the, to run the school, which is broken down into each one of these categories. So that's what, that's what we're requesting from the taxpayers to, to run the school. And we're saying this is what we need and this is, and this is where we're going to spend each one of these dollars that you're giving us. So, so we're asking for this much money, but then we're, we're tacking on another two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars on top of that for, because we're, because we're getting that two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars from the government. It ma, it makes no sense.
How do you think the government got the money in the first place? Didn't they raise and appropriate it from the taxpayers?
Well, they, they took it from us, but, but that doesn't change the fact that.
It was raised and upgraded for this purpose.
Yeah, but why are you going to charge the taxpayers again for it?
It's disclosed if the RSA calls.
It doesn't, it doesn't, the RSA doesn't call for that to be on the ballot.
It doesn't.
The RSA requires it to be on the budget forms. You do put revenues on budget forms. You don't put them in the warrant article.
It goes on the MS thirty-seven, because the MS thirty-seven goes to DRA, because DRA has to take this budget, because we say we need this money to run our town. But we have all this revenue coming in. So we have this property, we have this revenue, we have these taxes coming in. This is what it takes to run our town. They take this, they compile it all together and, and then they, they calculate our, our tax rate. Now, we've, we've, we're telling the taxpayers that it takes eight million, eight hundred, nine thousand, thirty-one dollars and seven cents to run the school on, on this piece of paper. And then we're going to hand them a warrant article that says we're going to raise and appropriate an operating budget of nine million, eighty-two thousand, uh, and, uh, nine million, eighty-two thousand dollars, eighty-two, thirty-two dollars. I mean, it makes no sense.
That's the actual amount of money we're spending.
No, well, no, this is the money we're spending right here on the budget.
Let Judy talk.
Oh, Judy, I'm sorry.
The federal grant money is Title One money, I'm assuming, correct?
And Title Two A.
And Title Two A. That money is not paying for anything in this eight million dollar budget. That money is paying for things over and above your budgeted amount, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you've got your budget, which is raised by taxation. You've got your federal grant, which goes into the federal projects fund and is managed through that. That federal grant does not offset anything in that budget. And in order to be in the budget, it has to be an offsetting revenue, but it's not offsetting anything. It's in addition to.
Well, it has to be in the warrant, but not the warrant article.
It would have to be in the, on the budget forms.
Right.
Disclosed on the budget forms, but it's not money that you're raising and appropriating by taxation.
It's almost like double dipping by the way it looks.
Because technically you have no, if you go to, you adopt this warrant article and then you go to this budget, where is that two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in this budget? It's not there. It's not in this budget.
I understand there's, there's questions around this. I, I've provided to the board and the budget committee based on the advice that's been given to me by DRA and our district attorneys. I believe that these types of questions would be best answered by our district attorneys or DRA. And they need to be present to answer these. Feel I've done my best to answer the questions.
I called DRA.
We appreciate that.
You're here tonight at a public hearing and DRA hasn't approved these yet?
No.
I called DRA and they really didn't want to address it without having seen it first.
Ralph, did you have a question?
I was just, I was just curious if anybody's read from the statement of the purpose of the law itself, right through the end of it. You know, I mean, you can take out parts of the RSA and apply it to any specific argument you want to.
Right.
If you don't take the entire RSA and understand it in its entirety, then you can get lost trying to put one piece of the RSA out and explaining it as the law. You're going to fail. If you don't understand the, the statement and the purpose of the RSA to begin with and each intertwining part thereafter, your argument's kind of silly.
Well, thirty-two five addresses three different RSAs.
And, and, you know, I mean, and that's fine. Well, I, but, but, but my, I'm sorry.
Can you continue? If you wrote the warrant, warrant article the way that it always has been written, can you continue to put the federal money in the federal projects fund and run it through that account?
Yes.
Yes, however.
Why do we have to add, why do we have to change this this year? Why can't we continue to run it through the federal projects fund? What's the purpose of doing this?
And I've asked that question over and over again as to why do we make, need to make a change now? And the, the response is because you need to follow the RSA. And when I asked the question as to why this hasn't been brought up in the past, the response has been, I'm not sure. But it needs to be brought up now, and that's why we're bringing it up now. And there was some questions as to why are these warrants here without going to the DRA? Because we submit the warrants to the DRA once the budget numbers are solidified after the public hearing. So we can make changes after this, that that's what goes to the DRA for, for approval. The warrant language that's in here currently is, is what is, the language is what's required by law. The numbers are what can change. So the wording will, will pass through the RSA, through the DRA when we submit it. But we don't submit that full warrant until we have a solidified number, which doesn't happen until after the public hearing. And they look at the article language compared to the notes themselves. So this is by law, the wording, and we'll submit it once we have a solidified number at that point. And that will be, that'll be solidified by our attorney and the DRA prior to the deliberative session after we have the public hearing.
I agree, the wording's right, the number's wrong.
Denny?
Priscilla, you've done some research on this in other schools. Of all the rest of the schools in this that you've talked to, are they doing it incorrectly?
In two thousand thirteen, I looked at thirty different schools. I couldn't find one that used this language. This year I've only been able to find one, and that was today, a new warrant, Pemi. It's like five districts. Uh, and they also, this is a brand new warrant article for their operating budget, and they haven't used this language. So I'm saying, if they're saying we should have been doing this right along, why isn't anybody else doing it? Can you provide one district that's doing it this way?
So are all thirty schools and, if, if all thirty schools are along, wouldn't DRA have said something before now?
Well, you'd think so.
They should have sent a technical advisory report.
I mean, nobody was doing it that way that I could find.
Connie?
Is Milton doing it this way?
Probably.
To propose this year.
Myself, I would feel more comfortable if the, if the amount that we're raising and appropriated matched the amount that was in the bottom line of the budget. And, uh, you know, we can change the, we can change the amount. And we could change the amount to reach all the Wakefield School District vote to raise and appropriate the, um, operating budget with the same wording and, and add the, uh, amount that, that we had, that we had, um, you know, from the budget request and, and from the budget, uh, you know, the budgeted amount. The, the way we've done it in the past, I'm sure that it wouldn't create a constitutional crisis if we do it the way we did it last year. And, and if, and if DRA prefers we do it differently in the future, I'm certainly, we could, uh, we could change it in the future. And I would feel that we would be on, I would, would be on pretty solid legal ground if our numbers matched, what, if our budget requests matched what our budget figures reflected. So, I mean, I don't know if someone would like to make a motion to, uh, Priscilla?
I would probably wonder about this. If I, when I talked to DRA, Michelle, she said that there hadn't been any changes in laws. Now that I've actually seen a district put it on the website, on their website for the fifteen, sixteen budget, I'm confident that we could still do it the old way, and I'll make that motion.
Okay. And so you're making a motion to match the figure that we had on our, on our budget of eight million, eight hundred, nine thousand, thirty-one dollars and seven cents?
Yes.
Second.
But does that include taking out the notes? Or are you leaving the notes?
Well, these will be changed.
It needs to be changed, but I, I don't have a problem saying we, we take in revenues of X amount.
Right.
Although this isn't all the revenues we take.
Still have questions. I still have a question.
No, because those revenues aren't offsetting.
Right, we, it would have to be changed as far as the language. I don't know if it belongs here, though.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seems like more confusion factor than anything else.
Yeah, take it all out.
Uh, Judy, yes.
The only thing I want to be assured of by the superintendent is that we can still accept the federal grants and they can still go through the federal projects.
Well, still, we always get those federal entitlements annually and we'll run them the same way we currently do. the same way we currently do. The difference is, we haven't been showing that for a voter on a ballot, what those revenues are.
Well, we get a lot of revenues other than that that we're not showing either. They're shown in the school district vote. That's where they are. They're all listed in the revenue section. So the voters are seeing the amount of revenues, right?
Correct, but they're not voting on it.
Well, they can't, well, I mean, how could they vote on them? They don't ever vote on them.
They voted to accept them a few years ago, I think, or for the grants. They voted to accept the grants, I think.
Right.
They gave permission to them.
I'm sorry.
I guess, I guess my question is, Mr. Tracy, is if we're spending eight point eight million on the budget, we're spending an additional two-seventy-three on, on other things?
Salaries and program.
Right. So the way I always understood it is that you have to vote on the amount that you're spending out. And if it is reduced by federal or state or any other program, then that, you're disclosing that here, but I, the way I'm understanding this, is that you're spending your eight point eight oh nine million plus two-seventy-three, and, and you need to raise nine million dollars because that's the amount you're spending totally. So that's the same exact thing you do at the town level. You do raise and appropriate the greater amount of nine million dollars.
Well, but we don't...
We do the exact same thing.
We don't, we don't raise the amount that we have for like highway grants and different things that are coming into the town, like the, like the federal grant money for highway repairs and things like that. We, we get that grant money that comes into the town, but we don't, we, we, we budget to do the work, but then we have the grant money that comes in to offset the, the budget.
And that's a special grant, though, but think about the, the grants that the police get.
Right.
The grant we raise as a town on the warrant article.
Right.
We raise a certain amount of money for what do you got, cameras or vets or spike strips.
Right.
We still raise that money, and it, then it is offset.
Isn't it...
By federal grant.
It depends on what grant it is, but some of them fifty-fifty, but, but, and those are grants that you compete for. These are grants that are, these are grants that are entitlement grants from the federal government. So they're a little bit different. Did you, did you do some research on those? Well, you've done some grant research, Judy, on those entitlement grants and the competitive grants, but, but I mean, it's, it's...
Well, the district doesn't normally accept competitive grants, because there's usually strings attached to competitive grants. These grants have been taking place since, what, once the IDEA grant, the SAU budget, and the IDEA's been in effect since, what, nineteen ninety? And the other one, this two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand is Title I money, which I think Title I started in nineteen sixty-five. We've been accepting these grants for years and putting them in this federal projects fund, and the monies all run through that. We're not raising, the difference is, Lisa, this federal grant money is not being used to offset your operating budget. It's in addition to your operating budget.
Because it costs a lot more than...
All separate funds.
Right. So that would warrant the nine point oh eight million.
But, but, but that's not...
Because it's in addition. It's, it's money that the, the...
That's called gross.
But it doesn't go through the operating budget. It goes into the federal project fund.
Well, do the expenses, okay, do the expenses get paid from the operating budget and then reimbursed from the other fund?
No. Uh, towards the, at the beginning of the year, we have to do that because we don't have the approval of the grant prior to the start of the school year.
So you have to actually spend operating money in the beginning? So is that the basic reason that your DRA reps and your, and your attorneys have suggested that you do this?
The, the simplified reason is, if you have, if you gross budget, it includes your revenues and your expenditures. And when I read the RSA, it says gross budget, which also includes grant money. So that's where you're seeing those additional revenues that are in there, which is your full appropriation to operate the school.
Right. So again, it's the eight point eight million for the operating budget and the two-seventy-three for Title I.
Correct. If the...
So the cash is being spent, and at first is coming out of the operating budget and then being reimbursed through the federal grant fund?
At the beginning of the school year.
Then I feel like that number should stay there. That, that's...
But the money's coming, we don't have to get that money from the taxpayers, though, because that money's coming in from other sources, because we get a lot more than that, two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand in, in grant money and other, and other sources. But, I'm sorry, Priscilla.
That's what I was going to say. If, if you're talking about revenues coming in, why isn't CATA, Medicare, nutrition, and the adequacy fund in that revenue? That's our revenue.
Can you explain that?
I can answer that. Because your adequacy aid, your CATA, all of those come in and directly reduce your, your tax impact. So they go, they, they go immediately into reducing your tax rate.
That's a revenue.
They don't, they don't come through your operating budget.
It's a revenue against that operating budget to lower your tax rate.
But, but this will, this will increase you. This two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars will increase your tax rate if we, if we leave that two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars on there. I mean, depending on what the, what the valuation winds up being, I mean, you know, you could be looking at twenty-five or thirty cent per thousand tax increase just by adding that two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars into the budget and, and raising and appropriating that, and you're going to get the money back from, in a grant anyway. So, I mean, it, it costs a lot more than eight point eight million dollars to run the school, but we don't, we don't appropriate all the money because we have, we have these other sources of money to run the school with. So we appropriate the eight point eight, which is, which is our portion of running the school, and then, and then the grants and the federal government and the other food and all these other ones, you know, they may be another two and a half or three million dollars worth of money coming in, but we don't want to burden the taxpayers with having to raise that other three million dollars or two million dollars or a million and a half, because if it would only burden the taxpayers, you know, and add that on to them, that they, that they really shouldn't have to, you know, shoulder that burden. Because like I say, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars could be twenty-five cents a thousand on the tax rate, so just, uh...
Also, if you didn't get the entire amount?
Yeah.
Would we have to pay that? Or if you got over that amount, would you not be able to use it?
Right. Exactly. Can you answer that?
The two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollar is based on a five-year average and going with the highest number out of that five years. We tend to see that the total, our total federal entitlements tend to decrease year after year. So the two-seventy is a safe number.
Safe.
How could you say that's safe, though? We're a school-wide school as opposed to a targeted school. We will probably get more Title I money now because you're dealing with all the kids instead of just the identified kids. So chances are, your Title I money's going to increase.
Not necessarily.
Too risky?
Very possible.
I'm uncomfortable with the two-hundred-and-seventy thousand.
Well, and we, and you still have a surplus from last year. There was six-hundred thousand dollar surplus from last year, the end of last year. He took some money out to fund the parking lot expendable trust fund, but there must have been some still left from that surplus. I didn't see any, any of these warrant articles or any of these capital reserves that were to be funded from the surplus, so I, I assume there's still five or six-hundred thousand dollars in surplus left from last year. We, so we have a motion and a second on the table to, oh, I'm sorry.
The closing discussion?
No, let's, let's find Ralph.
Curious how many Budget Committee members actually have read the RSA thirty-two and understand it.
I'm not sure. Uh, Judy, do you have a question?
I guess all I want to know is, you've basically taken this eight million dollar budget, and you've thrown another two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars in with, with no explanation of what it's going to be used for in any form like this. As far as I'm concerned, you could take that two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars and do whatever you want with it, because it's not defined in this budget what it's supposed to be used for. There's no function codes. There's nothing with the budget for that two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars. It's a blank check.
In fact, when I talked to DRA, I asked him the question, it's a bottom-line budget. Does that mean they could spend it any way they want? And she said, technically, yes. Of course, they have to, on the other end, tell how they're spending their grant money that came in, but technically, they could spend it.
So we have a, a motion and a second on the table, and I think the motion was to...
Do you want me to read my motion?
Reduce the, did, did you get any? I'm sorry.
Clarification on the motion.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to take the notes out. My motion is to, shall the Wakefield School District raise and appropriate it as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately? The amount set forth on the budget posted with a warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling eight million, eight hundred and nine thousand, thirty-two dollars, where am I? Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be, where is the default budget?
Eight million, eight hundred and six thousand...
Six hundred and seventy, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Wakefield School District or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA forty, colon, thirteen, X, or ten, fifty, sixteen, to take up the issue of revising operating budget. Note, warrant article six, operating budget, does not include appropriations in any, any other warrant article. Do you want that, Deb?
Get all that?
I'm going to.
You're going to, she wrote it all down and put it in a book for you. And I, and I thought it was just my imagination that it went on that long.
I'm stuck at that.
Essentially, what you've done, your, your motion is to revise the wording in Article four, so that it reads...
Reads like last year.
The way that Article six does with the change in the number.
Right.
Right.
Connie, second.
All, all in favor of...
Discussion? I didn't hear anybody move the question, ask to have the question moved.
Move the question.
And I didn't ask, I, I didn't see anybody say, no, no more discussion about this issue. The question for the Budget Committee is, are you prepared, and is the town prepared to defend itself against something knowingly and willingly violating an RSA?
Yes.
At this point?
Yes.
Yes, we moved it. We had a discussion. We moved it. We had a second. We had a discussion. We went back. Connie's, I mean, Priscilla clarified her motion.
So maybe you understand the RSA because none of you have read it.
I understand it, yes. We understand it. We've been in contact with the New Hampshire Municipal Association and, and DRA. What are, what we're, what we're doing, and just for the, so that it's noted in the minutes, is that what we're doing is we're taking the bottom line of the two-thousand-and-sixteen proposed operating budget of eight point eight million, and Deb's got the numbers, and we're making sure that that is the same number that we're requesting in the warrant article to be raised and appropriated by the voters in the town of Wakefield.
And that should be thirty-one dollars, not thirty-two dollars?
I think they rounded that off. When it was thirty-one dollars and change.
Yeah, it was thirty-one oh seven.
Well, if you're rounding, rounding it, it's thirty-one.
Oh, you want to round down?
Well, seven cents, you always round down on seven cents.
We didn't do it, they did it.
We can round it down.
I did.
We've already passed that point.
Just, just for my own edification, this, this warrant article, after it's revised, goes to the Department of Revenue Administration for their review?
Yes.
If, if they come back and say, are you sure you've got this right? We think it should be different. What is our parliamentary procedure from that point?
We, we could, we could change it, we could change it at the next session, but I'm confident that we're all set.
Move the question.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Need hands?
Need hands?
One, two, three, four, five in favor.
Any opposed?
Six. I thought it was six in favor.
Okay.
Six in favor.
Try it again.
Yeah.
Okay. Six, one opposed. Any abstentions? And so would that vote be okay with everybody to, as that, for the vote on the motion and, and the warrant article?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that all right with everybody? We did both. Ralph, is that okay for...
I mean, I, I see what you did, did proper procedure, but I don't know what the word shall means, but that is not my business.
Okay, well, that's fine. No, we want to make sure you're happy. Uh, so would anybody want to move on to Article five, or...
Jared?
Oh, I'm sorry.
When you send the warrant articles to DRA, the operating budget form goes with it?
Yes, I think they...
The MS form that you have to fill out?
Think they go together.
Or is the MS form afterwards?
They do one with it, right? An MS twenty...
The MS twenty-seven goes, goes along with it.
Yeah.
Before deliberative session?
Correct.
Then the MS twenty-two is afterwards? Okay. That's what I thought. On my notes.
I just had a point, though. Is, why would the DRA say that this isn't, you know, are you sure you have enough money? If, if it's been wrong all these years and they've never said, are you sure you don't need more money? And the auditors have never caught it? So I don't feel comfortable that it's, you know, it's after the vote, but it's after the vote, but it's, I don't...
I talked to Michelle Clark at, at DRA, and she's our representative in this area, and she didn't seem to have the same opinion that other people had about that being mandatory to be on the ballot. So I talked to, um, New Hampshire Municipal Association, and he said he, he thought it was ridiculous to put that on the, on the ballot. So, I mean, that's what my, that's what my experience.
Like a five, another school district.
Two and a half days has told me, so...
I wonder why there's a disconnect between the DRA and the attorneys and the...
I have no idea.
Do you have anything ready, ready for the attorneys?
And the professionals at the other service you used. Who's the other one?
MRI.
MRI.
Which town is depended on.
Yes. Why is there such a disconnect?
Well, there's, may I?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I can't answer the question around the disconnect. I can just answer the question as to what the response was when I asked, how have we been doing it all these years? And it hasn't been pointed out that we should be doing this, and the response has been, I'm not sure. So...
Revenues go on the forms, but the law is talking about the forms that are required. The budget form is different than the warrant article.
Are you sure?
I'm pretty confident that if that had to be on the, if that had to be on the ballot, the town would have had it on the, on the ballot, on, on all their warrant articles, because they're right on top of most of those things. And I think the other two-hundred and some-odd communities in the state would probably be on top of the same thing, too. I don't think that MRI just invented the wheel. I'm not quite as enamored with MRI as a lot of other people are. They can't even print on two sides of a piece of paper, so, anyway, moving on, Article five.
Why don't we do one?
Yeah, well, how did we skip? How did Judy sidetrack this whole?
Oh, because we went right from the bottom line of the budget over to it.
Because I asked why the budget...
Oh, that's right.
The budget.
So I guess we could start with Article two, Deb, if you'd like to review that for us.
To see if the Wakefield School District will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Wakefield School Board and the Wakefield Professionals Union, NEA-nH, which calls for the following increase in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels. Estimated increase, year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, twenty-two thousand six hundred sixteen dollars. Year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, twenty-two thousand one hundred eighty-six dollars. And further, to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-two thousand six hundred sixteen dollars for the two thousand fifteen school year, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increases in salaries and benefits over those of the appropriation at current staffing levels paid in the prior fiscal school year. The school board recommends this appropriation three to one, and the Budget Committee recommends this appropriation seven to zero with one abstention.
Do you want me to read the notes as well?
Sure.
Pursuant to RSA two seven three dash A, colon, twelve, if approved, the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, including the pay plan, but excluding cost of living increases, will continue in force and effect until a new agreement is executed. Second note, this appropriation is in addition to Article Four, the operating budget, a majority vote is required.
Thanks, Deb. Any discussion on Article Two?
What is the percentage?
What is that, Judy?
Two percent.
You have that, two percent?
Two percent.
Yeah.
Two percent, Judy?
It's two percent on the current salary scale.
There was minor language changes.
Do we have to vote on that again?
No, I think we already did that one.
I know we did, but there were eight of us here, it was only seven.
But we already did.
We already did this.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
See, no more discussion on that. Article Three.
Shall the Wakefield School District, if Article Two is defeated, authorize the school board to call one special meeting? Should that be at its option?
Yes. Yeah, I would think so.
To address Article Two costs only, a majority vote is required. The school board recommends this appropriation...
Say Article.
Yeah, it should say Article. Four to nothing with one abstention. The Budget Committee recommends this article. Six in favor, one against, and one abstention.
I think the discussion at the budget, when we were discussing this, was just the potential for the, what the cost would have, what the cost might be for a special meeting to, in the off chance that they had to have one, and I think that the, you know, the consensus of the Budget Committee was that the, that the school board would probably be pretty, pretty good about, you know, not, not having a special meeting or any, any special action unless it was absolutely necessary, so I think only one member had any real concern about the, you know, the possibility of spending that money on a, any kind of special meeting.
I think concerned about it.
I was...
Not only to spend it on a special meeting, you're going to spend it on a tax anticipation note, because you're not going to be able to set the tax rate. That happened once before.
That's what we talked.
That could be a costly little article, there's no money in it, but that could end up costing a lot of money.
See, people told you so.
Glad I brought, glad I brought that up, tax anticipation.
Tax anticipation note if they had to hold the tax rate and not say, that happened once before because of this specific issue.
Yes, it did.
We had a special meeting on a parent contract, and it held up the setting of the tax rate.
And they still haven't forgotten that at Town Hall.
No, that was, that's a major, major.
That's a major thing, yeah, the school did.
So long ago, tax anticipation note.
So that's why I didn't, you know, think it was a great idea, but...
That's a fairly, I mean, that's not too controversial. The school board did a pretty good job with that previous article.
And I did say that, I said they did a great job of negotiating, and it's such a small amount, there probably wouldn't be any problem, you know, people voting it in. Who negotiated, they did a great job. Bonnie, Steve, good job, guys. And, of course, Mrs. Johnson.
We could skip Article Four, Article Five.
Shall the voters of Wakefield School District adopt a school administrative unit budget of one million, seven hundred, forty-nine thousand, three hundred, ninety-two dollars for the forthcoming fiscal year, in which five hundred, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred, fifty-seven dollars are assigned to the school budget of the Wakefield School District. This year's adjusted budget of one million, seven hundred, thirty-five thousand, six hundred, ten dollars, with five hundred, seventeen thousand, nine hundred, sixty-one dollars assigned to the school budget of the Wakefield School District, will be adopted if the article does not receive a majority vote of all the school district voters in this school administrative unit. Note, the total SAU budget will be offset by revenues of eight hundred, twenty thousand dollars, leaving a net budget amount of nine hundred, twenty-nine thousand, three hundred, ninety-two dollars, to be apportioned between Wakefield and Milton School Districts, with five hundred, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred, fifty-seven dollars assigned to the Wakefield School District per RSA thirty-two, five, three. Second note, the total default SAU budget will be offset by revenues of eight hundred, twenty thousand dollars, leaving a net budget amount of nine hundred, fifteen thousand, six hundred, ten dollars, to be apportioned between the Wakefield and Milton School Districts, with five hundred, seventeen thousand, nine hundred, sixty-one dollars assigned to the Wakefield School District. The school board recommends this appropriation four to one, the Budget Committee recommends this appropriation eight to zero.
I believe Article Four was originally written, adopt the budget, and the Budget Committee here decided that they wanted the words inserted to raise and appropriate the money. Why not?
I think we're on, we're on Article...
I know, I just would like the Budget Committee to understand the way this is worded, the first sentence there, talking about the budget, and I believe that's the way Article Four was originally written before some of the committee members had passed to change the wording of that.
No, we never, we never changed that.
So it's been adopted.
I'm certainly old on it, raised and appropriate. I remember a discussion about that in the school board meeting, I can't remember who changed the wording.
Yeah, it's always been raised and appropriate, I know the town has been raised and appropriate. I mean, I think, I think it's been raised and appropriate.
You may be right, it may have been discussed...
That's per law, isn't it? That's the word per law.
That's the way I've seen it.
And that's the way it was in the original.
Any questions?
So why does the SAU budget not say raise and appropriate? Why did they say adopt?
I'm not sure, Mr. Kersey.
Because it's a, the SAU budget is, is based on two towns, so you adopt an SAU budget, and you raise and appropriate the funding in each individual town. So that's the difference between adopt and raise and appropriate. So you're adopting the overall budget, which actually includes two towns, but you raise and appropriate that apportionment in the town of Wakefield.
The way this is written, this is an eight hundred thousand dollar tax increase, split between the two towns. I mean, the budget is nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, we have to raise and appropriate one million eight. If you split it between the two towns, that's a four hundred thousand dollar tax increase if you go with the wording in this RSA, I mean, in this warrant article. It should be, it should be written the same way Article Four was. It should, it should include the seven twenty, the budget amount, not the extra eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We have the same identical issue. Because I was wondering about that, too, because we went to the, November nineteenth, I think Bruce was at that, we went to the public hearing, and everything at the public hearing reflected a nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar operating budget, so I was kind of wondering, I, I did go back after the meeting that we had and took a look at the, took a look at the minutes, I was wondering about that, because it was all...
You're maybe looking for this?
Based on a nine hundred, twenty-nine thousand dollar budget, I was wondering where that other...money was in the budget. Maybe you just checked. Eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant, that's a federal grant, I'm assuming that... Yes.
Four hundred thousand dollars, that, four hundred thousand dollars of that is, of the eight hundred and twenty is IDA grant funding, which comes through the SAU, and four hundred thousand dollars for Bright Beginnings, and twenty thousand dollars for indirect costs.
Again, I, I don't think it's right to put a four hun, even though we split it between Wakefield and Milton, you'll put in a four hundred thousand dollar tax increase into the budget for our town. Okay, that's supported. Yeah, I mean, I got, I got the SAU budget here, and I mean, like I, like I, I'm not exactly sure, the, the one that I had was nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars, ninety-six cents, there might have been a couple of changes in it, and like I say, it was at a, it was at the public hearing, the public hearing was held on November the nineteenth. I looked at the minutes from the, from the public hearing, and I looked at everything I could find, and there was never, and I mean, I think Priscilla was there, and I know Bruce was there, I never remembered even hearing the figure of one point seven million dollars at all at that public hearing, so I'm, I'm wondering about the public hearing process, how, how accurate is a public hearing if you have the public hearing, but you give out inaccurate information? If you have a public hearing, and your public hearing is based on nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and, and from that public hearing you move forward to the next step to create a warrant article that represents the, the public here, that represents the budget to be one point seven million dollars?
Are you asking me that question?
I am.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
At the public hearing, we, we discussed the operating budget, and then the warrant was developed after the operating budget was, was, it was, the operating budget was approved prior to the public hearing by the SAU Joint Board. It went to the public hearing for review, there weren't any changes made at the public hearing, and then that operating budget was put into warrant, the warrant language, which included the gross budget concept, which puts in that eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Those warrants are then presented to each individual town, so that's why you're seeing that at this point.
Can I read?
But so, well, but, but at the public hearing, you could, how can you change the, how can you change the budget amount so drastically after the public hearing? We can change the figures and needs at this public hearing, but after this public hearing, we can't, we couldn't double these figures after this public hearing. Now, you know, the RSA, this is, there must be a hearing held on the budget, it says, it says all purposes, amounts, appropriations to be included in the vote at the annual special meeting shall be disclosed or discussed at the final hearing, but it says purposes, amounts of appropriations included with the vote. I mean, it, it seems like, it almost seems like you would have to have accurate figures. I mean, I, I could see it being off a few dollars, but I mean, I don't, I don't understand how you hold a public hearing, and then subsequent to the public hearing, you double the budget amount and, and, and consider that to be, having been a legitimate public hearing on that budget figure.
Do you have the rest of that article, of that duty two, five, two?
No, I don't think I do.
The governing body or Budget Committee shall not thereafter insert any budget column or special warrant article in any, in additional amount of purpose of appropriation which was not disclosed or discussed at that hearing without first holding one or more public hearings on the supplemental budget request, the town or district.
Doesn't sound like you can make a huge, I'm sorry, Judy?
Again, I believe the IDA grant money goes through the Federal Projects Fund, and I believe the Bright Beginnings money also goes through some type of separate fund. You've already raised and appropriated the Bright Beginnings money in the Wakefield budget, why are you raising and appropriating it again in the SAU budget?
Steve?
You take it from the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You take it from the Wakefield budget and you send it to the SAU, and it goes in a separate fund. It doesn't go in the SAU budget, because otherwise you'd have to have another SAU budget that looks like this, with all those employees listed on the budget. It's not there.
I'm sorry, when you approved this, what, when you approved the SAU budget at your joint school board meeting, what was the figure that you approved?
Nine twenty-nine, three ninety-two looks familiar, the way it looked.
That was the public hearing. Right.
Let me bring something up.
I'm sorry.
Just to throw another spoke in the wheel, the budget, the school board approved, or not the school board, the Joint Board approved a budget number on October twenty-ninth for the SAU budget of nine hundred, nine thousand, nine million, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-six cents. The minutes say, the approved minutes say, that the Joint Board approved a budget of nine hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. So that your approved minutes are not what you actually, I got this after video, but the only record, or what do you call it, Steve, the only official record would be the minutes, and the minutes say nine eighteen. Now, you had a public hearing on the nineteenth, and you didn't vote on the budget at that point, because there were some questions about Bright Beginnings and Back Bay, so you had a meeting scheduled for December tenth, and at that meeting you did not vote on the SAU budget, this is all joint. And then you had another meeting on the fifteenth, and no vote on the budget at that meeting either, all you did was forward the warrant article with that one point seven, but you people never voted on the budget. And I've got all the minutes here. The only reason I found this out, because I was looking, looking for a figure, because I had one figure of nine eighteen in the minutes, and then nine thirty-four on the, so I was just, and I found this.
When we had the...
I need to be stopped.
When we had our last meeting here, we voted on the budget, did we not?
That's correct. On the SAU budget?
Yes, sir.
And it was one point seven million, one, one million, seven hundred and...
It's, that figure minus the eight hundred and twenty.
That would be December fifteenth.
So it was nine hundred and twenty...
That would be December fifteenth at Paul School.
But the public hearing was November the nineteenth.
And there's no record of you voting on any, in your official record?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ralph, I didn't see, Steve's in the way.
He's always in the way.
Well, I didn't want to be the one to say that, but...
Mr. Kersey, you did explain that four hundred thousand was, in this article, four hundred thousand of the eight hundred and twenty thousand was represented as Bright Beginnings that was raised and appropriated by the town of Wakefield going to the SAU. So if you were to comply with RSA thirty-two, that's helping to comply, you're showing where the revenue, not that it's federal money, but it's being raised and appropriated by the town of Wakefield, it's included in that answer, eight hundred and twenty thousand, and in an effort to comply with the RSA, you're showing it as your gross budget, not the...
Yes, we... Glad you did, in the SAU budget, or does it go in a separate fund? It goes into a separate fund.
It's a revenue.
It goes into the, it doesn't offset your SAU budget.
That's in the auditor's report, right? That's in the auditor's report, listing those funds?
Yes, there's a, I just asked Mr. Kersey on the last warrant article, there is still a Capital Projects Fund, and the federal money, grant money can still go in that. I specifically asked that question, because I don't want to hear six months from now, oh, we can't accept the grant because it's on the budget. That's why I specifically asked the question, to know that we do still have the Federal Projects Fund, the money can still be accepted, and can still go into that fund to be dispersed.
So, so, just so, just so that we're clear, the, the school board did vote on the nine hundred and twenty-nine, Bonnie?
Yes, we did, but Priscilla, I have a question, because...
Yes, we did. But Priscilla, I have a question, because were you videoing? Is that what you did? Because those minutes won't come to us for approval until our next joint meeting. So, I don't know where you're getting the minutes from the December fifteenth joint school board?
They're unapproved. They're unapproved minutes, the fifteenth and the tenth.
And how did you get those before we did?
All you have to do is request them. Minutes have to be available to the public within seventy-two hours.
Okay.
Even if they're, even if they're not approved, there's still the official record of what they placed at the meeting, so.
I was just trying to check my record, but I'm thinking that I wouldn't have it in my-
You want to see the minutes?
Yeah.
I would love to.
Well, no, I mean, I just, I just, yeah, I mean, it just maybe, it just, if, if that was, if that was, if the nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand was the, was the agreed figure.
I agree, nine twenty-nine, three ninety-two.
If that's the agreed on figure, maybe that's the figure that should be reflected on the warrant article and, and given to the voters. I mean, if we're gonna have it accurate, it would make sense to have the, uh, it would make sense to have the approved amount be represented to the voters.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa.
What would happen if you changed the wording to nine twenty-nine, three ninety-two, and we didn't adopt the one point seven? How can we raise and appropriate nine twenty-nine if we don't adopt the full budget?
This is the same conversation in Article Four, so what would the committee like to do?
It would be the same, the same way we did it.
I'm just afraid of what, because I have so many questions on this, what happens here, what happens there. Yeah, I'm afraid to leave it like this.
Well, the question is to adopt the, it's, the question is to adopt, um, adopt an SAU unit, uh, uh, adopt the SAU budget of one point seven million dollars. That's the question.
But the other question is, the only budget that they approved was nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Right. And that's exactly what these notes say, that it would be offset, Wakefield's section would be nine twenty-nine, three ninety-two, a portion between Wakefield and Milton. Milton's five twenty-five, Wakefield's nine twenty-nine.
Right. But that, we don't want to pay nine twenty-nine, 'cause that's the total budget.
I think Bonnie just said that's what she approved.
No, the, the nine twenty-nine was the, was the total SAU operating budget. It's, uh, did, did you have a SAU operating budget?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Church.
Just to, to answer, or just establish the numbers for Lisa. The total SAU budget is the nine hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars.
So, what's the total?
That is split between Milton and Wakefield. Wakefield pays fifty-six percent of that. Milton plays, pays forty-four percent of that. So, you'll see that what, what the apportionment is for Wakefield is the five hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty-seven dollars out of that nine hundred.
Thank you. I misread that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Right, 'cause they took that nine.
Okay.
So, where are we getting the one million, seven hundred?
They apparently added some revenues into it.
For Beginnings and, uh, IDA.
Oh, yeah, forty, forty, and two, twenty.
What was the twenty, anyway?
Indirect costs.
Oh, that's right. I couldn't remember what it was. Bonnie has a hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bonnie, I didn't see it.
I know that it was nine twenty-nine, three ninety-two, and if you look on that, we had the vote in the difference, and I believe that difference is the lowering of the health insurance.
I remember you talking about, but the official vote is not recorded in the mode-
The official vote is nine eighteen.
But it's not in your minutes.
It's right here. The official vote, Ann Walsh made a motion to approve the operating budget of nine hundred eighteen thousand, four thirty-two.
But if you lis-
Andy Crone seconded this.
Right.
And all the vote is, uh, everyone that was there said aye.
Right. But if you look, listen to the video, you actually approved nine hundred, nine thirty-four, three seventy-six, ninety-six. That figure's wrong.
Well, it, it's, it's-
And the three ninety, uh, nine thirty-four, taking away whatever it was you took away, would be nine twenty-nine, what, five thousand, I think, would be nine twenty-nine. So, that would work, because it was a five thousand for insurance, I think.
So, there needs to be a correction in the minutes.
Yeah.
But these haven't come to the-
That's all right, we'll just jump ahead.
All right, so what do we-
But the fact remains, you have not approved that nine twenty-nine, three ninety-one, seventy, as a joint board. You haven't approved that new number.
Well, I mean, you know, nine eighteen to, nine eighteen to nine twenty-nine is a lot less difference, a lot, less of a difference than nine twenty-nine to one point seven million.
Yeah, but they have to approve their budget.
Huh?
They have to approve their budget.
I know. But I'm just saying, if you put, if you're gonna put one point seven million on the warrant, and you've only approved nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand as the board, and you've only had a public hearing and represented the public hearing to the public as being nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar budget, and then you go into the deliberative session and tell the voters that it's one point seven million, I question the, I question the accuracy of the, accuracy, accuracy and the legitimacy of, of the public hearing. What's the point of having a public hearing if you're not gonna give out accurate information?
'Cause they did vote on the warrant article at the meeting on December fifteenth, I believe it was, but that was past the deliberative session, I mean, the, the public hearing. Should have done it at the public hearing, you're right.
Oh, it was the nineteenth of November. But I'm sorry, Bruce, you were there. I mean, what's, what's your position? You were at the public hearing. Am I out in the left field?
The only number I recall is, is the number that's on the, the handout that was provided. Which was nine twenty-nine.
Bonnie?
It's just, I can't imagine the public reading this and knowing what the heck they voted on.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to revise that, to read the same way as Article, um, as Article Four did, or?
I'll do it again.
You sure you want to do that?
Sure.
And I'll second it.
I'm sorry?
You gotta clarify the motion.
Okay.
Did you have another vote?
I have another vote. I do have another vote.
Boy, I'm telling you, you're prepared.
I'm always prepared.
Question?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
What happens if we change the wording of this warrant article, and we vote and people approve this, but the people in Milton don't change the wording on their warrant article?
I was wondering about that. What can we do?
Well, I, I don't see why would.
They both have to approve the same warrant article.
Mm-hmm. Have you talked to Milton at all?
Well, we could, we, uh, we could talk to, have, have, has the Milton board talked to you about any of these?
I met with the Milton board, um, Monday, and we meet with the budget committee on Monday as well.
I could talk to the Milton, uh, budget committee chair. We have another meeting at the, I mean, I hate to have another meeting on just one issue. I mean, I don't, uh-
I think we have to give them a chance to approve their budget. So, there's not a lot we can do with this right at the moment. I mean, I'd be more than happy to make that motion, but don't they, shouldn't they have to approve their budget technically?
I'm not sure.
What if they don't?
They lead first, didn't they already approve that budget?
Yeah, that's, Milton budgets through.
Have they had their public hearing?
I'm talking about the, the SAU budget. Let the, when I'm saying you, I'm saying the SAU, uh, joint board needs to approve the budget. So, there's not a lot we can do with this until the SAU board approves that budget.
So, we can't act independently from, from them on, on, on this then, huh?
I, I'm not convinced, Priscilla, that the nine twenty-nine, three ninety-two hasn't been approved by the joint board. That was the last number that went to the joint board, and that, that, that included the two point five percent, um, on health insurance.
I'm wondering if, um, if, if there's typographical error in-
Correct.
'Cause that's, minutes haven't come to us for an approval yet.
Right, but those are, minutes will come to you.
That's right. So, there could be, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that that's, and I don't have all of my SAU stuff with me, but my, I'll have, I mean, I have to go home and check my minutes.
And I didn't record that night. I didn't record that night, 'cause it was going to be a quick five to five-thirty. I came, and, but I couldn't tell you if you voted on it or not, to be perfectly honest.
I can tell you, like, in my heart of hearts, I know that we voted on that.
It should be reflected in the minutes.
And it should be reflected in the minutes.
So, the minutes need to be amended, because we wouldn't have brought forward a warrant article with an incorrect number, or had a pub, public hearing that wasn't voted by the joint board, so.
It could be an oversight.
I'm confident that's the number that's been voted on.
I'd go back and vote again, but that's me.
Did the joint board vote on the one point seven million dollar warrant article?
They did.
Yes.
They voted on the one point seven, the joint board?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Voted on this, on that budget figure, on the one point-
They voted on that warrant. You see the-
Because that's the way that we were told, that we had to do it to follow legal action.
Correct. It was a joint board meeting, and then it was brought to each individual board.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Milton's portion, our portion, and then the eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of revenue.
Yeah, they did vote on that, but they didn't vote on their budget first.
I'm sorry, Ralph.
What comes first, the public hearing or the approval of the budget?
Well, I mean, at the, what we did was, we-
It's an ongoing process.
We did the budget ourselves, and went through it and approved it, and then had the public hearing. I mean, what?
I think it's the public hearing first, and so we approved the budget, isn't it?
We approved the town budget and then had the public hearing. We approved the school budget at the budget committee level, and then had the public hearing. We've always approved it with the budget committee first, and then had the public hearing.
So, I, that's why it's always that. I guess that must make it right.
Well, you've been on the budget committee for almost eight years.
I, I just seem to always remember having discussions at a public hearing and then approving the budget.
If there were changes.
Well, that's what the public hearing is for, to make the changes.
But it's approved prior.
Okay.
The bud, the school board has to approve their budget.
Every meeting is a public hearing. You needed a public hearing and discussion to approve the budget. You can't have approval of the budget for a public hearing unless you do things like Wakefield.
Okay. Get his voter registration card.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I guess, I guess we've, we've come to a screeching halt on this, uh, on this operation, so.
We're gonna direct, uh, suggest to the, the boards that, uh, they have a meeting. When did you say? The joint board?
The joint board.
Joint board's not meeting till April.
Oh, it's just the Milton board that's meeting.
Well.
With the budget committee, with the Milton budget.
And I'll, I'll say, Mr. Chair, that I'm confident that we went through the appropriate process to put this warrant forward to the budget committee. If the bor, budget committee wants to change this warrant language, and Milton decides not to change this warrant language, you're still raising and appropriating the same amount of money that's in the, in the warrant. So, your five twenty-seven's gonna, your five twenty-five, seven fifty-seven's gonna come from Wakefield, and Milton is gonna raise and appropriate their apportionment of the nine twenty-nine. So, Milton might opt to stick with this warrant language, and Wakefield may not. That's to your discretion.
I just wonder why this new wording and this warrant article process and this one point seven million dollar budget figure wasn't available in November nineteenth, when we had the public hearing on, on the SAU budget. I mean, if, why, why would, why would we, why were we not informed of that at the, at the public hearing?
It's thirty-two, five, two, and that's what should have been done, and it wasn't.
And, and it makes me wonder about the legitimacy of the public hearing. I mean, you know, you, obviously, you have to have a public hearing, um, you know, prior to, you know, the, the deadlines before, uh, what, seven days advance, public hearing must be noticed, like, uh, no later than twenty-five days, and no less than seven days in, in, in advance. I mean, the purposes, the amount, the appropriation, I mean, it, it sounds as if you have to present accurate information. I mean, and so, I mean, we went to a public hearing and, and looked at a, a nine hundred thousand dollar budget, and somewhere in a couple of months, it turned into a one point seven million dollar budget. Does that, I mean, does that strike anybody as being a little bit odd that, that, that the, that the budget figure doubled in, in, in two months? I mean, I, it, it strikes me, it strikes me as odd. I, I just, I mean, Ralph was wondering about the legal ramifications, about some of the things that, that, you know, us changing the amount in the warrant article, which is perfectly legal for us to do, um, at a public hearing, and, and I just wonder about the legal ramifications about having a legally noticed public hearing and, and giving out, you know, false information at that, uh, at that public hearing.
Incomplete.
Incomplete, I'm sorry, erroneous.
I can speak to that as well. When that public hearing was posted, the MS twenty-seven for the SAU budget was, was available, which included that eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars in there. So, that, that figure was provided, um, as a posting for the public hearing.
The one point seven million dollars?
The, the additional eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars in revenue was part of the MS twenty-seven that was posted with the public hearing notice.
But we hadn't made the connection yet to, to put that in the warrant article and add it on to the appropriation at that point. What point did we decide to connect these to the warrant articles?
When we developed the warrant after the public hearing.
We would have had to go to the SAU website to check to see what was on the MS twenty-seven. Did anybody do that? Not even me?
Uh, Article, uh, Article Six.
So, Mr.?
You, I'm sorry.
So, is there a action on that?
Well, it was a motion, right? Well, I mean- We have a motion.
I'll reset my second.
Well, no, we can't, we, we were told we can't do anything, because Milton may not do anything on it, and if Milton doesn't, if Milton approves it, then-
That's not true.
I don't believe that that's correct. I think that if your board, if your budget committee chooses to change it, whether Milton goes with the language or not, we're asking for the same amount of money. We're asking for the five hundred-
Twenty-five dollars.
Five hundred, twenty-five, seven, seven fifty-seven is what we're asking for, whether our language matches theirs or not.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This committee act, can act, this committee acts independent of Milton, so regardless of, regardless of what you decide this evening, it's not, it wouldn't have an impact on Milton, 'cause the budget won't change. It's your decision on the actual wording of the warrant that can be made at this local level as a budget committee. So, you could, you could make that decision this evening. It's not gonna impact the, the bottom line number.
How would we like to present this to the voters in, in, at the deliberative session and at March? I mean, do we wanna, do we wanna go to the deliberative session and try and explain this to the voters, or would we rather try and explain, or would we rather word it the way that it's been worded in the past and have it go on the ballot in the traditional way? And, uh, does anybody have an opinion on that?
Leaving it the way it is begs the question. If you take Wakefield's five twenty-five, and you figure that's fifty-six percent, a few of them are gonna be smart enough to know that the other forty-four percent isn't gonna get you to one point seven million. So, you're gonna have to deal with that question. It's a lot easier for the voters to understand that the total budget is nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and five hundred and twenty-five thousand of that is Wakefield's, and the remainder is Milton's. And it's just easier to understand.
I agree.
Makes sense. Bonnie, you wanna make that? I'm sorry. Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, but I don't find the way this is written, um, unusual or hard to understand at all. I feel that I'd like, as a voter, to know what the whole budget for the SAU is. Our portion of it doesn't change one iota, whether it's at the million dollar or at the nine hundred. It's just telling the voters exactly what the SAU budget is, and that the eight hundred and twenty is revenues tagged on. I don't see anything wrong with it. That's just my opinion.
Great. Thank you.
But that's the discussion we've had, and not a before.
Right.
The same thing.
I'm for fuller clarity.
Judy has a question.
Uh, Judy, yes.
So, you're basically just adding eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the budget, but again, it doesn't have a function code. It doesn't say what it's for. It could be spent on anything in the world.
Detective, I'm gonna make that motion. Let's do it. They can vote on their budget after the fact, if they want to make it. I mean, Mr. Church, you believe that they have, uh, the minutes don't reflect it. They can take another vote, or, I mean, that's up to them. We can't tell them what to do.
We've already been here once, and you guys shot me down. You gonna read it this time?
Well, I can't read this one, because this one includes a grant accountant.
Can we?
So, that was an offset. So, that grant accountant was in this one, so I have to have that one back.
Oh, gee.
It's the next article.
How many votes do you have?
One for every year. Now, we bring two curtains. You have one more question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
And a comment and a question. Eight hundred and twenty thousand, that's revenue. If it's government funding, I would assume there are parameters under which it can be spent. Right or wrong?
You're right.
So, then it can't be spent, nearly willing, like was just suggested.
Just technically, they could, but yes, they have to account for the money. Okay, uh-
Well, they can put that 820,000 dollars in the budget and then they can take the 820,000 dollars and put it in the federal funds that comes in actually from the grant and still have both. Technically is what they could do.
Wow, I never thought about that.
Yeah, 'cause all they have to do is deposit in the federal funds and spend it on there and they've still got 820,000 dollars in the budget.
Okay, here we go. Shall the voters of Wakefield School District adopt a school administrative unit budget of whatever the figure is? For the forthcoming fiscal year, which, how much?
Uh, 525 dollars and, uh, 757 dollars.
Are assigned to the school budget of this school district. This year's adjusted budget of... What's that? What would that be?
929,392.
With 500, with, God, this is too confusing.
525.
With blank being assigned to the, the school budget of this school district. What would that be at my mind?
525,757.
Assigned to the school budget of this school district will be adopted if the article does not receive a majority vote. The school district voters voting in this, uh, school administrative unit. Note, uh, the total SAU budget will be offset by indirect revenues of 56, oh, that's, I've got here, did they have a grand accountant? Yeah, that's a grand accountant. Forget the doubt.
915,610 for the default.
What was it default?
915,610.
610.
These both have the grand accountant in them.
That's... Do you get a motion?
I think I have. The motion is, is to amend warrant article number five.
You, you're not allowed to.
To read this way.
Right.
Only change the numbers.
And, uh, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion on Connie's motion? All in favor, raise your hand? Looks like six. Opposed? One. Any abstentions? Hope that doesn't leave any, does it?
Turn that on, Jerry.
Yeah. There too. It's too much intelligence. Too much intel... Oh, I'm sorry, Ralph.
Was Priscilla's motion to also eliminate the notes at the end of the article?
Yeah, my motion was exactly what I read, not including any notes.
Like I said, you said, forget the note, let's start with the...
Well, this note I, that I began to read was about the grant accountant and I said, forget that. I, I take...
So, what do I do with the notes?
Nothing. I'm not putting the notes in.
You're not putting the notes in the article for the warrant?
Right. Just like we did on the article four.
That in your mind, could you accurate accounting of the operating budget?
We have all that. All that information's available if anybody wants it. We get all the grants, money that's, that's all. I mean, we got, we got all kinds of sheets of, of the money that's coming in. People, people always say there's too much to read on the ballot. You know, you don't want a half of, another half a page of, uh, you know, reading, Ralph.
The grants are listed in the school district. What does it mean? They don't want to let the deliberative session?
Uh, let's see, Article 6. You're on, Deb.
To see if the Wakefield School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be placed in the expendable trust fund previously established for the purpose of updating and improving security at the fall school. Note, this appropriation is in addition to Article 4, the operating budget, and a majority vote is required.
Any questions or discussion on Article 6? It's, uh, it's the, um, expendable trust fund that was started two years ago? Was it three years ago? I think it was a couple of years ago. Two years ago. And, uh, we've been putting money into it every year and the school board has a pretty comprehensive, uh, safety, um, security plan that they've been implementing, um, and working on, so... Seeing, uh, Judy?
Well, the first hundred thousand that they were given was not spent the way it was supposed to be spent. The second 50,000 last year, I don't believe, hasn't been spent yet. So, why are we adding another 50,000?
Uh, well, I mean, obviously, and, and you probably know better than anybody else that all the security issues are discussed in non-public, so the, the general public really has no real way of knowing what, what's, uh...
I can tell you that what was supposed to be done with the first hundred thousand was not done. Some of the things were done, but it was not...
And we could talk about this...
I can say that. I know.
This 50,000 is for windows and they've probably discussed this over and over. In fact, they discussed it at our last budget meeting. And I think their bottom line for the windows would be $300,000 to replace them.
Does anyone have that balance on the trust funds handy as of November 14th? I know we got those last meeting, but I don't have mine right with me.
It was an emergency. It was a security issue that the tax, he does, he had to have the money and it wasn't done.
Well, yeah, there was a, there was some discussion surrounding that.
Thank you. I'll make sure you get that back. Okay, so 55,000 basically left in that trust fund as of November.
In ways that was kind of a leap of faith to put the money in there. I know that when it originally started, there were, um, there was a group of people with police department. I think maybe the fire department. There was some safety people that came together. Well, they probably came to your board. I mean, probably and, and, uh, just...
There was a specific written plan with dollar amounts that was passed on.
Can't you see this?
The windows were not part of it. The windows were never part of it?
No, the windows weren't part of it, but what was part of it was not accomplished.
Right. Well, and, and I mean, and I mean, if you look at the vote, the, the school board approved it, uh, five to zero and the budget committee approved it five to three, uh, you know, uh...
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes.
So, originally there was $100,000 in there and as of July 31st, 2014, we had spent $94,958,000 on security, which left us close to $5,000. And then October of, of 2014, we put the other $50,000 in that was appropriated through last spring's vote.
I know you spent $94,000. You just didn't spend it on what you were supposed to. What, I shouldn't say, you didn't spend it on what was in the...
Any more, uh, discussion on, uh, Article, uh, 6? Seeing none. Article, uh, 7?
To see if the Wakefield School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $150,000 to be placed in an expendable trust fund previously established for the addition of a parking lot at the fall school.
And, uh, this one didn't make out so well. School board recommended it five to zero and the budget committee didn't recommend it on a vote of three to five. Uh, any, any discussion on, uh, Article 7? Ralph?
I witnessed the budget committee have some concerns over the numbers. And I'm curious, do the bud, does the budget committee feel as though the number isn't high enough or is too high?
Um, I don't know if I would speak for the entire budget committee, but I don't, I, I felt, and I think that's something, there's a few things that, uh, one particular member brought up was that we didn't really have, um, it wasn't really a comprehensive plan, uh, laid out, that, uh, really explained, you know, exactly the, the entire scope of the project, um, that had, um, an engineer stamp on it and, and something that may have been, uh, reviewed or approved or, uh, by the planning board and, uh, it, it just didn't seem like the, uh, project had, had quite gelled to the point where, um, some of the members were willing to, uh, invest another $150,000 of taxpayers' money into what I think, um, some of the members, uh, preferred to, to see, to see a little bit more substance, you know, before investing, uh, more money in it.
There's $75,000 in the trust fund now.
Yes.
So, they can go forward with the plan to bring forward to us next year. That's my stand on it.
I think a little of that's been spent, not much. So, six or seven thousand dollars has been spent. So, there may, they'll wind up being around, um, 69,000 in that. Ralph?
So, if, if the, um, plan goes forward and the engineer comes up with it, with the plan, the survey and all that's done, it spends some money out of the 75 for the remaining amount. And then bids are brought in and, and totals come to somewhere around $200,000. Does this budget committee feel as though the school board should wait for another 12 months, another budget cycle to get the, the project finished? And is that how it feels?
I think so. Yes. I think that, I think that was the, uh, I think that was pretty much the, uh, that was pretty much the feeling of the budget committee.
So, how many budget committee members will chastise the school board for not accomplishing the mission we've set out to do three years ago?
Uh, none.
Oh, okay.
We're all, we're all pretty easy to get along with. Connie did...
I'm gonna hold my tongue.
Okay, uh, yes.
I do agree that the cart was put before the horse. However, we now have a field that has been demolished. To leave it there for another 12 months creates a safety risk. I would rather see that money put forward, get their ducks in a row and go forward. But to put it on hold for another 12 months as a, as a taxpayer, I don't agree.
Thank you. Um, Connie? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Bonnie.
Bonnie was first.
I guess as a school board member, I totally will admit that we dropped the ball on this. We didn't listen to our superintendent. We tried to do things in a different fashion and we didn't, and we didn't come through the way that we thought we were gonna come through. There was a lot of hoops, a lot of rigmarole, a lot of backtracking. And now, for the safety of the children with, if this doesn't go through, for the safety of the children, out of that $75,000, what our option is gonna be to protect the piece of property that's there and the livelihood of the students is that we're gonna have to invest some of that money in a fence to go around it until we can get the plan done up and to get, and to show the people that we can be trusted to spend their money appropriately. So, I think that, you know, that's something that's gonna have to be done because we dropped the ball. It wasn't the public and they trusted us with the $75,000 and we didn't come through for them. So, I can understand why you're choosing not to back that. I mean, am I disappointed? Yes. But I understand you wholeheartedly as a businesswoman why you wouldn't support us. And I think that we're gonna have to do the best that we can to make sure that the kids aren't over there in the snow sledding and that it's protected by some kind of rental fence or whatever until we can get it engineered and move forward and bring something to you all next year.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we have any other choice.
Right. Um, Connie, yes?
Actually, the people might vote for this anyway.
Right.
Regardless of how the budget committee votes.
Exactly. That's right. And they, and they, and they, and they have to, they certainly have to. Lisa, did you have a...
Yeah, what other concerns, safety-wise, other than maybe sliding in the snow? What, what other concerns are there that you have?
Um, I'm not sure about...
Safety concerns?
I think, I think that, you know, my biggest concern is that I don't want, because snow cover is very blinding, I wanna make sure that the staff in the building, I'm sure that they do, understand that that's not a playground for the children in the district. And I really wanna make sure that even after hours, it's a security area because you don't want someone, the stumpage, the, the drainage, things like that are gonna be an issue where it's an unresolved piece, where it's a started project and not finished. That there's gonna be, you know, there are certain hazards or concerns that I would have that would go along with it. And I just wanna, I personally would like to see that it's, at least it's a protected area and that there are very, you know, that we have something in place in the building that says, the teachers, this, everybody knows that that's not a place for the kids to go sledding. And, you know, it should have keep out or off limit signs or no trespassing signs and it should be fenced off to protect people.
Yes, ma'am.
At this point, I would not want to spend more money to keep it safe. I'd rather move forward, get it done, so that we're not put, adding more cost to the project.
We do too, but if it's not gonna be backed by the people, then we're not gonna have any choice.
And nothing's gonna be done until, uh, after March and, and you, I mean, you've still got another five or six months with it sitting like that. So, Bonnie's talking about protecting it to the winter. So, that's gonna happen anyway.
Right.
I'm assuming. That's what it sounds like.
Uh, Steve?
For clarification, um, it's my belief that the biggest problem in this whole parking lot thing was started when the school board received a $500,000 estimate. I think everyone said hello. Well, I think which, and now we've already shown that it can probably be done for somewhere about half that money. So, I think the problem all started with a $500,000 estimate. If you had actual, you know, real numbers instead of this pie in the sky figure that, okay, let's just start paving, that was the problem and I think the, a number of board members took it upon themselves to try to save the taxpayers' money. And I think we're actually in, in doing so, although it hasn't come to fruition, but at the very minimum, we have shown that we can save 50% of what was originally estimated of that. So, I, I think that's something to be said for that.
Ralph?
The safety issue that I'm aware of, Lisa, is, um, is traffic in the wintertime parks on both sides of Taylor Way, coming in out of Forest Hills. Traffic's heading in both directions. It's a very narrow path. Witnesses have come to me and said, I had to stop a vehicle. A child was walking between a snowbank and the vehicle parked on the side of the road. Child slid on the snowbank under the vehicle. I had run out of my driveway, stopped that driver until that child crawled out from underneath the vehicle. That to me is a huge risk. And if it happened last year, not that we have a whole lot of snow and ice this year yet, it could happen again. So, to me, that was the most important issue in my mind. That was the reason that parking lot had to be done.
Judy, did you have a question?
Yeah, I guess I had a comment. There's still $75,000 in the warrant article. Um, that certainly would be enough money to get somebody in there to stump it and slope it and do the plan. There should've been a silk fence up there from the very beginning when the job was started. Uh, never mind waiting to put a fence up now. And there's still the metal and wood piles over there that I complained about two months ago have not been picked up. So, your safety issues you're creating yourself by leaving your trash around and by leaving your stumps in the ground. Of which if you had accepted the first bid that included stump removal, you wouldn't have this problem right now.
Um, Priscilla, uh, Priscilla?
Connie made, made a good point that maybe, looking at the numbers, maybe the district, uh, the voters wouldn't vote for this anyway. So, I'm gonna make a motion to zero out this, uh, warrant article. I'll second it.
I'll second it for discussion.
I think we should leave it up to the voters.
Well, you know, I mean, we, we put our, I mean, we, we put our opinion on it. I mean, and I think that, you know, if, um, if the voters decide that they could, uh, you know, that they wanted to, to do that, I mean, we, we certainly wouldn't force them to do it, but we, you know, at least by leaving it in there, they, they do have that option. You know, I was wondering, Mr. Tracy, these, these, none of these were funded from the surplus. Um, a couple, some were last year. Is there any particular reason why we didn't fund it from the, uh, surplus this, this year? Didn't anticipate there'd be a big surplus.
Hopefully, we're budgeting well enough that there's not a large surplus.
Don't have to worry about that, huh? I'm sorry. Anybody else have a...
Well, if you budget it from the surplus, then it wouldn't impact the tax. Even this way, it does impact the tax. Am I correct?
Yes.
That's what I thought. So, budgeting from the surplus is actually a good idea for the taxpayers.
Well, not if there's a, that big of a surplus to begin with.
There's been three, four, five hundred thousand dollars every year for the last 10 years.
Well, last year we had... Well, last year, we had 660. We started out with 800 and then it went down to 600 or something. I'm just, I'm just curious.
But my problem with, the reason I want to zero it out is because the voters aren't going to know that these, that the board didn't come to us with a, with real numbers, it's these, like Steve said, cohesive plan with real numbers. They're not going to know by looking at this article that they don't have a cohesive plan.
Well, but that, but they could come to the deliberative session and, and lay out a plan, I mean, or, or, I mean, it just, I mean, I understand your position, but I mean, it's not really, doesn't seem like it's our position to really punish people for not doing our will. I mean, it's like we, we shouldn't be in the position of, of.
Well, if they brought a, a plan to get to us, we'd probably be approving it.
Well, wait, but I mean, if they, if they bring a plan to the voters at deliberative session, the voters may jump on board and, and, I mean, what do you think, Bruce?
I, I'd prefer to have the voters vote on it.
Okay. I'll, you sit in my motion. I get the feeling of the board, so.
No, I mean, it's, I understand, I understand, I understand the position of, you know, probably wanting to get it done, and, but I mean, I think like, like Judy said, there's probably a lot that could be done for, you know, for $70,000 to maybe, you know, maybe address some of Bonnie's concerns and, and, you know, get it leveled out, cut down to grade, and, you know, do a little bit to improve the situation.
Can they work that way if it's not approved, if there isn't an approved plan? Can they just say, let's stump it, grade it?
They've already done it.
That's, that's kind of what the problem has been.
Well, can they continue to move forward without the said plan?
Well, yes, they can, because they have the money to, to do it. I mean, it's not, it's not like a, if, if there was a warrant article, you know, regular warrant article to, to do a job and, and it got shot down, you couldn't do the job. But in this particular case, it's an expendable trust fund, you got the money there, so you can, you can take the money out and use it for that purpose after you have a public hearing.
Okay, so.
As long as the money's there, you can continue to work on the project.
So what are the, what does the wording, what does the wording say that, that 75 or 70 now can be used for? Does it, is there a particular purpose or is it?
This is an expendable trust fund for the parking lot, so for this parking lot project.
The work, does the wording exclude anything that they're thinking about doing?
No, it's, it's whatever the scope of the parking lot lines up.
It's whatever the parking lot.
It's whatever the scope of the project lines up being.
Okay.
It's, I think it's pretty, it's, it's pretty open. Have you hired a, have, have you hired a, a person? I'm sorry, excuse me.
There, there is an approved plan, and that approved, approved plan is now begun, going to be sent out to, to an engineer.
Well, we asked for a plan last time when we reviewed these, and they said there wasn't one, but, but.
We have an approved plan.
Well, you weren't at the meeting, and Bonnie wasn't at the meeting, but we didn't have a plan to look at when we were, Bonnie?
We have, we have a drawing of a plan that we've approved as a board to give to an engineer to see if it's feasible that that plan can work. That hasn't been approved yet, and we do have a plan, but it needs to get the stamp before we move forward.
Well, if you're going to go to someone and ask for $150,000, why wouldn't you bring a plan and say, this is what we want to do with the money?
I understand your concerns.
I, I just curious. I, you know, it wasn't like we didn't ask for one last time, you know, we didn't, like I say, you weren't here, Steve wasn't here. We asked about it last time and didn't have, we had one, but once we spent time looking at it, we realized that that was not the plan, so we pretty much wasted our time looking at that. So then, so then we know we're going to, we're going to talk about it again this time, and you, and you look at it and you see that the board voted three to five against it, so you come in with nothing again. So I wonder what, I wonder, what, what are you thinking?
It was a drawing. It was a plan. We didn't have concrete figures on what it, estimates.
Okay.
Like, like, right, like Carol did.
Denny?
You know, we all know, and Steve just said, we're going to spend, we've got 75 now, this will give us what, 225, we know we're going to spend at least that. Leave it up to the voters.
Right. Yeah, I rescind my.
The warrant article was written, leave it up.